Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, September 8th. It is approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. If we can please rise and let's get... How about the officer in uniform? What is your name? I'm sorry.
Officer Grant.
Why don't you come on up and lead us in pledge? Please. You don't mind, do you?
I don't mind.
Random?
All right. "To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Chief White? Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Good evening.
Is that on?
Can you hear me now?
No, no we can't.
You can hear me now. Thank you, council. We want to remember, as we always do, this anniversary week, and this is the 13-year anniversary of our September 11th tragedy. We brought our memorial in. That is a piece of metal from the World Trade Center that was awarded to us. And we take that in a traveling circuit and let the kids at the schools and so forth see it. But to kind of put things in perspective, we partnered with Oviedo High School Audio-Visual Group. And, well, all the seniors across the nation this year, this is 13-year anniversary, so they were not born at the time of this tragedy. So it was interesting conversations with them for us to put a perspective to it as public safety. So I'll just remind you before we go in prayer, over 3,000 total victims impacted 70 different nationalities, 343 FDNY firefighters, 37 Port Authority police officers, 23 New York PD police officers, and eight private EMS personnel on that day. So I think it'd be appropriate tonight to remember this tragic event. So if you wish to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're reminded of the events 13 years ago in our nation, and we pray for your protection and your hand, the comfort and healing for the families, the coworkers, the friends of all these lives that were impacted. We pray for our nation. We pray for our elected leaders. We pray for our military, our public safety, everyone on the front line today. And, Lord, we just ask for your protection, that you would give us the resolve to discover these things early and take appropriate action when necessary. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. You're welcome. All righty. Ceremonial items, we have none this evening. So I am going to open up the budget public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2014-2015 milage rate and tentative budget. Mr. Cobb, I turn it over to you for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the city council is asked to conduct the first of two required public hearings for consideration of the milage rate and fiscal year budget for 2014-15. The budget was presented to the city council on July 28th and August 25th at work sessions, and the city council gave direction. Certain adjustments were made based on that direction. The final budget that is presented tonight is $54,429,115 net of inter-fund transfers. Within that, the general fund budget is $25,068,482. The recommended milage rate is 5.0434 mils, with a general obligation bond issue milage rate of .02546 mils, for a total milage rate of 5.2980 mils. Council, I will call to your attention the introduction part of your memorandum is the eight steps that we need you to follow tonight. This is per state statute, so we'll need to follow those closely. Also, council, I would like to give a special thank you to Mrs. Hayes, our Management Services Director, and her budget team, Ms. Kelly Jones, Ms. Gail Bigelow, Ms. Lucy Colm, Mr. Paul Beldon, Ms. Tracy Rodriguez, and the department heads and managers and supervisors who all contributed to the preparation of this budget. But I also want to thank you, because this budget process has gone smoothly, and I appreciate your willingness to have open, frank discussions with us. And I wanted to also thank you for your input and direction during this time. We would ask that you read each resolution separately. We'd ask that you take action on each resolution separately. And once we're completed, we would also ask that you schedule a second and final public hearing for Monday, September 22nd, 2014. And if you have any questions, Mrs. Hayes is available to address any of them.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Before I go through each step, are there any questions from council on the budget? No? Councilwoman, you're good?
No, I'm good.
All righty. First step is that we state that the proposed milage rate of 5.0434 mils is a milage increase of 9.03% compared to the rollback milage rate of 4.6259. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time on either item? All righty. Seeing none, we are going to close that. Could I have the city attorney read the title of the milage levy resolution number 2889-14, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Resolution number 2889-14, a resolution establishing the milage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2014-2015 by City of Oviedo City Government, adopting the milage rates for the 2014-2015 fiscal year for the City of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.2980 mils, with 5.0434 mils for the city's operations, and 0.2546 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issue, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. That is the resolution by title only. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number 2889-14. I'll move. We have a second? We have motion second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. All righty. So upon adoption, the milage rate is set at 5.0434 mils, which is 9.03% higher than the rollback milage rate, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of 0.2546 mils, the overall milage rate is 5.2980 mils. Just like to point out to everybody that that is less than the combined milage rate of the city from 2003 by nearly a half a mil. City Attorney, can we have you read the budget resolution, please? Number 2890-14.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2890-14, a resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2014-2015 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2015, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. I'd like to entertain a motion that we adopt resolution number 2890-14, which would be adopting the fiscal year 2014-15 annual budget of $54,429,115.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, excuse me. Was it five? Four to one again? Nay. Well, all righty. Thank you. Four to one. All righty. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to move that we schedule a second public hearing for Monday, September 22nd, 2014, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second.
We have motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that was five oh. Yeah, okay, there we go. All righty. Robin, are you satisfied? More importantly, is the city attorney satisfied? Followed all the steps?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All righty. Moving along then. Item number three, that is the approval of our minutes for the August 18th regular session and the August 25th work session. Like to entertain a motion to do so.
Motion, approve minutes on August 18th and August 25th?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment portion of the meeting, I have no written requests this evening. Anybody in the audience? Oh, come on, a staff member, come on up, say something. Say how nice we are, anything. All righty, we will close public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor.
Councilman Schenk. Uh, Hankin, pardon me.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing I'd like to talk about.
Sure, of course.
The proclamation on Kiari Malformation Awareness Month. This is a disease I'm sure many, many people have never heard of, because you don't hear of it until you know someone personally who has it. And I learned about this about six years ago when my daughter had it. And then, you know, from there, Mr. Cobb is very familiar with this. So I'm going to thank Mr. Cobb for bringing this and making it aware. It's something that you can be born with it at birth, or it can just happen, you know, in adult, and it can cause a lot of serious problems. And it takes a long time to recuperate, and there are some lingering things. So thank you for bringing some attention to it. I think it's an important cause. Thank you.
Councilwoman, would you like to pull it off and read it in its entirety?
Sure, I'll do that.
All righty. Motioner and second to agree? Who is the second? Are you the second?
Yeah, I was.
All righty. We'll pull it off. And just for the record, it was Mrs. City Manager who sent this.
Mrs. City Manager, yes.
I'm sure somewhere along the line, Mr. Cobb was involved.
Yes.
All righty, so we have a motion on the table to adopt items six through 10. We're pulling five off for a reading. Everybody in agreement? All righty. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman, why don't you go ahead and read? Resolution number... What is it? Oh, no resolution, just the proclamation for Kiari.
Yeah. Whereas Kiari Malformation, CM, is a serious neurological disorder whereby the bottom part of the brain, the cerebellum, descends out of the skull, causing crowding of the spinal cord, which puts pressure on both the brain and the spine, and may block the flow of cerebrospinal fluid to and from the brain. And before I go forward, please forgive my mispronunciation of these medical terms.
That's why I didn't read it.
Whereas Kiari Malformation affects well over 300,000 people in the United States, and was first identified by Austrian pathologist Professor Hans Kiari in the 1890s, and categorized in order of severity, types 1, 2, 3, and 4. And whereas the cause of type 1 CM is unknown, but scientists believe it is either a congenital condition caused by exposure to harmful substances during fetal development, or that it can be a genetic condition, as it may appear in more than one family member. And whereas symptoms usually appear during adolescence or early adulthood, and can include severe, sometimes crippling headaches, neck pain, vertigo, muscle weakness, balance problems, numbness or weakness in the limbs, blurred or double vision, difficulty swallowing, sleep apnea, and sometimes death. And whereas the National Institute of Neurological Disorders and Stroke within the National Institutes of Health is conducting research to find alternative surgical options and identify the cause of the malformations in order to create improved treatment and prevention plans. And whereas increased awareness of Kiari Malformation will lead to expanded knowledge and increased support for both research and for patients and families affected by the disorder, that will hopefully answer fundamental questions regarding its underlying cause, diagnosis, and treatment. And now I therefore, Dominic Percampier, Mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, by virtue of his authority, by the authority vested in him, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as Kiari Malformation Awareness Month in the City of Oviedo, and urge all citizens to promote research and bring awareness about this devastating disorder.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to add to that. When you bring awareness to it, I can tell you that when I found out my daughter had it, I was shocked, and I thought, what the heck is this? And I didn't know anybody that knew it, so it took us a long time to find some good doctors. But you bring awareness, and as Mr. Cobb was telling me, a woman came here for a fundraiser or an awareness walk, and she met his wife, got to talking, she got some information on it. So there's some support, and that's what's really important.
Terrific, and thank you for reading it.
Thank you.
I'm going to assume that we can move for adoption of the proclamation?
Yes.
Second? Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call...
Mr. Mayor, to improve awareness, should we dump some water on her head?
We could.
We could do that.
Actually, Mr. Britton, what they're doing...
Is this one the pie in the face? I saw something with a pie in the face.
No, actually, this one is, what you do is you go and you get an icy, and you spin around, and you drink it really fast to cause a brain freeze.
Oh, boy.
So that you can actually get to feel the effect of the Kiari in your head.
That hurts.
I'd rather dump the water.
Well, speaking of dumping water, I think only two of us up here did it, and there's a lot of people that I'm waiting. I haven't seen it yet. But I, we did the 10 pounds of ice, and I need to see it. Okay, guys?
I haven't done it yet. I plan on doing it.
There you go.
Councilman Schenk, do you have any plans? No.
He's doing it.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, well, that was Mr. Van Huesen sitting out there smirking, who called me out, and then I called out the rest of them. So it was all done in good order and good cause. Motion on the table to adopt the proclamation. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, we have no public hearing, so we're going to get on to first reading of ordinances. And if it's okay with the city attorney, instead of reading them all, we're just going to make one motion, adopt all four, and move on. Is that okay? All righty, ordinance number 1592, Mr. Cobb.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Ordnance 1592 is a ordinance that supplements the state regulations regarding electronic cigarettes, which are commonly known as e-cigarettes. This ordinance will, it prohibits any business from selling e-cigarettes to minors. It prohibits them from, retailers, from displaying e-cigarettes out in the open. They'll have to put it behind the counter. It also, it causes the, it is also prohibited that these e-cigarettes must contain the same type of warning labels that you find on tobacco. It supplements the action that was taken by the Florida Legislature, and it allows that our own law enforcement and code enforcement procedures can be used as far as enforcement of the ordinance. It's recommended tonight that the city council read the ordinance by title only, and to schedule a public hearing for September 22nd, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mrs. Nix, can you read ordinance number 1592 by title only, please?
Gladly, Mr. Mayor.
And don't take anything personally. I would have done the same thing to Mr. Grub.
Thank you. Ordinance number 1592, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for regulations relating to e-cigarettes or nicotine dispensing devices, nicotine dispensing devices, sorry, it says that word. Providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for definitions, providing for prohibitions relative to e-cigarettes or nicotine dispensing devices, providing for relationship to controlling federal and state laws, providing for a savings provision, providing for implementing administrative actions, and for enforcement and penalties, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a second public hearing for Monday, September 22nd, 2014, for ordinance number 1592, here in the Oviedo, Oviedo, excuse me, City Council chambers, at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Nothing? All righty. Call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That was five? Okay, just checking. All righty. Motion passes. All righty, moving on to item number 13. It's ordinance number 1593, designer drugs. Ms. Nix, can you read this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 1593, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for the regulation of and prohibiting the sale, display, delivery, and possession of various synthetic drugs, as defined in this ordinance as designer drugs, providing for definitions, providing for required warnings and labeling on packaging, providing for relationship to controlling federal and state laws, providing for a savings provision, providing for implementing administrative actions, and for enforcement and penalties, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, will you give us some background, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the council is asked to conduct first reading for ordinance 1593, which provides for regulations of designer drugs. This ordinance is also to complement the work of the Florida Legislature, as well as the Florida State Attorney. It requires that these so-called designer drugs to have certain packaging labels on their, on their, the containers, explaining the harmful effects of the drug. It also requires that the packaging of the drug paraphernalia contain warnings as well. It will be prohibited to sell, display, or deliver any designer drug without the compliance of the label requirements. It will also be prohibited to sell, deliver, or display the designer drug, which may contain certain substances that are defined by Florida statutes. And then, any product containing a synthetic alternative or synthetic alternative drug or synthetic marijuana, a synthetic hallucinogen, or stimulant also would be prohibited. It would be prohibited to manufacture or create any type of misbranded drug or alternative designer drug. As I said before, this is, all of these things are to complement what the state legislature is always already doing. It is recommended tonight that the council read the ordinance by title only, and schedule a public hearing for Monday, September 22nd, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, September 22nd, 2014, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved. Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman Schenk? Councilman Hankin? Anybody else? No? We're good. All righty, you all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 14. It is ordinance number 1596, angle parking. Ms. Nix, can you please read this ordinance by title only?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 1596, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, relating to parking, prohibiting backing into angled parking, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and correction of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a little background, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This ordinance, ordinance 1596, also supplements state parking regulations. It requires that when there is angled parking, that the vehicles be parked facing forward, that no person shall park or stand a vehicle other than at the angle to the curb or the edge of the roadway indicated by the markings, and entirely within the limits of the space, with the front wheels nearest the curb, within six inches of the curb. It prohibits individuals from backing into the angled parking spaces. This is to address the safety issue. Primarily, as you know, we have on-street parking on Oviedo Boulevard, and on City Plaza Way, and Boardwalk Avenue, and we'll have it also on Center Lake Court. We've noticed a number of vehicles being backed into these angled parking spaces. This does cause a safety concern. Tonight, we are asking the city council to read the ordinance by title only, and to conduct, schedule a public hearing for September 22nd, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number... There's the ordinance. There it is. 1596, for Monday, September 22nd, 2014, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers, Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved. Motion second. Any discussion? No? Thanks, Chief, for all these, all three of them. Figured save it all for one and say thanks for all three of these. Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Motion on the table is to schedule a public hearing for September 22nd. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, ordinance number 1597, I'm sorry, that is item number 15. This is an easement vacate. Ms. Nix, can you read this ordinance, number 1597, by title only, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 1597, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning a 12-foot utility easement located between Lee Avenue and Lake Charm Drive, south of Woodcrest Way, as depicted more specifically in an exhibit, providing for findings, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, non-codification, and an effective date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a little background on it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the city council is asked to consider a request to close, vacate, and abandon a 12-foot utility easement that is no longer in use by the city, so that a portion of property may be included in a single-family residential development. The utility easement was granted to the city in July of 1991. It is no longer in use by the city. The city did, as part of our process, we did contact all utility providers within the area to see if they had any utilities within the easement. The letters came back that they do not. So the easement is currently not being used by any utility provider. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council vacate the easement. Tonight, we are recommending that the city council read the ordinance by title only, and schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 6th, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing, the ordinance number 1597, on October 6th, 2014, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
Motion, and lots of seconds. Any discussion? Nope? Anything? Nope. No discussion. All in favor of the motion to schedule a public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions, item number 16, we have none. Discussion items, County Road 419 profile. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn this over to you, and then I'm going to assume we're going to hand it off to Mr. Wyatt.
That is correct, Mayor. The city council conducted a work session on April 22nd, April 28th, 2014, and Mr. Harlan Hanson made a presentation to the city council about an alternative roadway profile for County Road 419 from State Road 434 to Oviedo Boulevard. At the conclusion of the presentation, the city council asked us to contact the consultants to determine what the cost would be to do the modifications recommended by Mr. Hanson as far as the changes to the plans, and then also what kind of delay that going in and revising the plans might occur. And council asked that Mr. Wyatt come back and bring a presentation. So Mr. Wyatt has worked with our design consultants, and he's also worked with Mr. Hanson. And tonight, we're following up from our discussion on April 28th. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. You know, it's funny, as much as I've talked about this in the past few weeks, I thought I could get up here and put the timer on and be done, but now with that summary, I think I can do it in 20 seconds.
Good. Done.
Anyway, as you recall from the April 28th meeting...
Actually, Bobby, I'm very interested in learning how the sheet flowed, the water's going to work on the road, so keep going to some...
You know, it's interesting, the only non-staff member in this entire room is actually the design engineer for that project, and she's here. I could have her come up and give a presentation on it.
I want to know how a droplet of water's going to... I want to know how the droplet of water is going to flow, because Mr. Britton's very concerned about it.
You had me when you said you can get it done in 20 seconds.
We've already flown that now.
Go ahead, Bobby.
But long story short, as part of the April 28th meeting, Mr. Hansen was here advocating for a change to the median width. Current design has it at 22 feet. Mr. Hansen is advocating for 16 feet on the median in order to try to, by shrinking the median, widen the sidewalks within the existing right-of-way. I've been advocating for the wider, where the existing median in order to try and do maximum landscaping through the corridor. Direction from council coming out of the work session was to find out how much was it going to cost to modify the design to go to 16 feet, and how long would it take? The time was four months, project delay, which really isn't that big a deal in the grand scheme of things. And the cost was just under $50,000, and that was, that's kind of a big deal. To me, I passed it on to the county, county deferred back to me, basically said no, puts it back on us, and that was money I was looking forward to using for landscaping. But it's interestingly enough, as part of the process, Mr. Hansen and I spent a lot of time together, had some meetings, I had more communications with the county, talked about what the issue was, and the county came back with an interesting idea, which I hadn't considered before, but I think it's really neat. They've actually offered to do the increased sidewalks by offering to do additional right-of-way if the property owners are a willing seller, which I think is great, because both sides get what they're looking for. And so after discussions with Mr. Hansen, we're all in agreement, we're now working together on the whole idea and the vision for the right-of-way, including the corridor and Boulevard we talked about. And basically, what it's come down to is we're not really looking to change the median anymore, so there's really no cost increase associated with it, there's no real project delay. What I'm looking for is kind of consensus from council to kind of direct me to work with the property owners and kind of come up with a memorandum of understanding to address the access management along the corridor. Put it in a nutshell.
That's it, in a nutshell.
That's really it.
Any questions from council?
That's what we talked about...
It's actually been beneficial, yes, sir.
All right, okay, I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
One, two, three, four. We're going to get a memorandum of understanding between the property owners ourselves and the county?
I'm going to try to get the county into it, that'll be an interesting twist, but yes, sir, I'm going to try and get it in.
I would think that it's important, because we do have a lot of moving parts, you know, eventually 426 will swing over.
Yes, sir.
You know, there's been a lot of discussions on who's doing what, at what cost, I mean, if we can get that on paper...
And I agree.
As best we can, I think it would just be helpful as we go down the road, so it's not a matter of he said, she said.
They're definitely part of the conversation.
Okay, great. Everybody agree with that one?
Yes.
Good. All righty, Bobby, do you have anything else from us?
No, sir, I'm good.
I really want to hear about that water. I'm only kidding. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
All righty, we're up to reports. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you remember, a few months ago, I told you that we had received our preliminary population estimate for April 1st from the Bureau of Business and Economic Research, and they had given us an estimated population of 35,690 as of April 1st, 2014. We asked our GIS staff to go in and research, because the reason they give it to us in August is that they give us an opportunity to, to review it and see if it's reasonable. Received information today that based on the city's, the city's data, the estimated population should be 36,758. So we will be notifying the Bureau of Economic and Business Research that we want them to take another look at their estimate and, and to have something closer to the 36,758. We also, they also found some...
I'm sorry, Brian, how much? 36,000?
And they also found some information from the Census...
Where'd the other thousand people come from?
I'm sorry?
I said, where'd the other thousand people come from?
That's a good question, because they did not include Oviedo on the park, since this is April, considered April 1st of the year, they backed out a number of, a number of population. Interesting, the Census Bureau estimated the city's population as, this is, this is the interesting part, July 1st, 2013, Census Bureau estimated the city's population at 36,648, slightly lower than what the city's data is reflecting, and so, which is also higher than the 35,000 that the Bureau is estimating. So we're going to ask them to take a second look at it, hopefully they will see things our way, and it's all about methodology.
Right, because the working number is like 35,300 or something.
Correct.
Right, isn't that, okay.
So, I just wanted to give you an update that we will be submitting, we submitted that today for, asked them to reevaluate.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That is it, Mayor.
How was soccer this weekend?
Very frustrating.
That sounds like losses. Well, sorry to hear that. But at least you got to go up and see your son play.
Yes, he played, he played very well, just the outcome wasn't what it should be.
That's all right, you got to get up there. All righty, so moving along, city attorney's office, do we have anything tonight?
Nothing specific to report. Monty Grady made it safely back into the country.
How about this, how about a quick update to council, if you could, on Friends of Oviedo?
Okay.
Because I get to meet with you and sign things all the time, why don't we just update the form?
Okay, I did not bring the date to have with me that we actually sent an application, I apologize, but I think it was about May, the end of April, and I had received a letter back from the IRS, of course, acknowledging that they had received the application and basically stating that if they had no questions, which I've been told by a multitude of people is pretty much never the case, that they would go ahead and say, stamp, that's it, your tax-exempt organization, excuse me, and, and that we would hear back from them in a certain amount of time. If they do have questions, we won't hear from them for about six months, at which point someone will be assigned as our IRS coordinator to ask a couple of follow-up questions, maybe, and then they'll make their determination from there. So I have not yet been contacted, aside from receiving the actual acknowledgement, and that three-month mark has gone by, so I'm expecting to have some dead-air time for another few months until they actually do contact with me with some questions. But certainly, the board's been great about meeting with me, all of the things that they've needed to do, they've certainly done, and we're just kind of waiting to hear.
Oh, great. Anybody have any questions on it?
I have one question.
Yes.
Once you apply for a 501(c)(3), you can do fundraising, and you can say that you have applied.
You can say, yes, that you have applied for that, but do not have their determination yet, which that's absolutely fine to state that, because that is a fact, and then once, if approved, we obviously hope that the organization is approved, and we think it will be, but then it's retroactive, back to the date of application.
So anyone donating money in the meantime, that can come off their tax.
Yes, and we have provided a, a letter that states that for the board's use.
Would you let us know when you hear?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Because I think the bank account is what we met on last time, correct? We set up the bank account? The bank account, isn't that what we met last couple of weeks ago about?
Yep, that's when Jerry had the contract for the ratification of the banking agreement, so that's been most recently taken care of.
So we're getting there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, anything else from staff? Moving on, my report, well, let's see, we've got a few things coming up here. Farmer's Market, let's talk about that. Chief, you guys had a spectacular farmer's market the other day, busy as busy can be, so congratulations to everybody at the Historical Society. I mean, it was very crowded, and looked like all the vendors were selling out, very happy. So that is wonderful to see, and thank you for the updated t-shirts that you gave us up here on the desk, we do appreciate that. Okay, well, they'll be coming. Coming up on September 19th, it is the annual grudge match of Hagerty and Oviedo. This year, it's going to be over at Hagerty High School. And Drew, is that 7:00 or 7:30? What is game time?
Two leaves, it's a second.
All righty, and get, get back to us on, you know, get back to us on parking, usually have us parked in the back, and whatever we need to know, we would greatly appreciate it. Went to the president's HOA meeting a week ago, I think that was, gave them an update on the state of the city, they were extremely receptive, probably about 20 folks in attendance at the meeting, and, you know, every time you go out, tell the story, show them everything that's going on, there is a lot of excitement for what we're doing, so, you know, and they just always compliment us, compliment us as a group, compliment us on what we're doing and how we're running the city, and so that also goes for staff as well, because, you know, the group does recognize that it's not just us, it's staff also. So they, they really do send their compliments, and they are quite excited to see everything that we're doing. Chief gave them a brief update on medical marijuana, even though he couldn't say how he was going to vote, that, I don't think there was any doubt. But anyway, Councilman Deputy Mayor Schenck stopped by, because he was having to be at the mall, and came in, said a quick hello to the group as well, so they were, they're always glad that we stay involved with them. Then finally, I've gotten the mail today, I don't even know if you have this, Mr. Cobb, but it says that we won the Certificate of Achievement Award again for finance. Are you aware of that? No, it's in my mailbox, says, "We are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2013 qualifies for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting." So Finance Department, awesome job, did you guys know this already? Well, there you go, a nice surprise I found in my mailbox. So I will leave this up here, I'll give it to Barbara, and she can pass it around, but great job as usual, everyone. I think that makes, what, about 10 or 11 years in a row? Does anyone know? A lot of years in a row, right?
Yes.
A whole bunch. A whole bunch of years in a row. Well, congratulations. End of my report. Deputy Mayor?
Went to chamber lunchroom last week, and it was very good, but I got to sit down with our newest school board member, Mayor Walters, talked to him for a little while, and he's already advocating on our behalf and making sure that, asking me what we need while he's up there, he's really ready to serve and do the job that's asked of him. The Alhouse renewing is on the 11th, so please make a, if you got a chance, be there, make sure you get there to see the official lighting of the Oviedo Alhouse.
What time?
Starts at 6:00, lighting is at 7:00.
Yeah, about 7:00, they said.
Actually, it's 5:30.
5:30 starts, 7 o'clock is about what time they'll probably...
Mr. Deputy Mayor, is it on the 10th or the 11th?
Wednesday. It got moved. After we moved our meeting, they moved theirs.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I did say the 11th, it's Wednesday, the 10th, I apologize.
Yeah, so we're having our meeting tonight, because we moved it because of them. Sorry, guys, it's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, yeah, I said, yep.
Wednesday, the 10th.
10th, not Wednesday. We saw some...
No harm, no foul, right?
Yep. Sorry. Saw some emails, you guys saw some emails about the lifeguard competition that took place yesterday. Jack, I was there, I'd stopped by, they'd asked me to come say, welcome to people. Jack did do a great job, everybody there seemed to be having a good time, seemed to be enjoying it. There were lifeguards from all over, it was quite interesting to see, but there were a lot from Tallahassee, to Legoland, all around here, and in the end, and I told them, you know, they better not show up, they're going to have a tough time this morning if I showed up and they didn't win, so they did win and represented us well, so it was a great job.
Drew, why don't you bring them all down here and let us congratulate them? Anything else?
You know, it is, and I said it to them, you know, they're showing off the skills that they use, you know, in a fun way, and they did some fun relays and had some fun doing it, but also they were showcasing the skills that they do utilize every, you know, hopefully they don't utilize them every day, but they have, and they train for, so it gives them an opportunity to have fun while also showing off the skills that they do really need and use.
Great. End of your report?
Yep.
Councilmember Hankin?
Thank you, sir. Just one thing, if you all haven't checked your mailboxes, the Oviedo Magazine had a really nice story on the cover of Chief Chudnow, and I saw that today, and it's really a really good story, Chief, about all the work you do when nobody sees you doing it, and I'm going to let everybody know that the chief is everywhere, is always willing to lend a hand to anybody who's in need, along with his lovely wife Cheryl was on the cover, and both of them are just great ambassadors for the city, so it was a nice article. They had a few other folks in there who do some stuff too, but Chief, put that in the, you know, over the mantle, frame it up, you deserve it, and I just want to wish a congratulations, so good job on that. That's all I had, Mayor.
They tacked it up over the bar at the Alhouse today, so...
He was signing, he was autographing the copies if you want.
Well, it's better than those Facebook polls on every table, you know what I'm saying?
Got the sign changed.
And listen, that angled parking, make sure you don't abuse that over there, okay? Backing in the wrong way, okay?
Councilwoman Europe?
Well, I think everything's been said.
Excellent. Oh, look at this, Deputy Mayor Keith Britton, it says here on my thing.
Oh, thank you.
I must have an old template here. Anything, Councilman Britton?
I don't know if we talked about this before, but Lars, we got an EMS inspection result?
I don't know, that's been after.
Did we talk about that last time?
No, I don't think so, go ahead.
But congratulations, that's, that's the standard we like to, to hold ourselves to, and that's something we expect, and it's very well appreciated, so tell the, tell the fellows, thanks for the good work. I will have a League of Cities advocacy meeting on Friday, I'll be down in downtown Orlando, so I'll be attending that. The mayor and I attended the Leadership Seminole event last Friday.
I forgot about that.
I don't know what the mayor did, but I, I gave an hour discussion on what we do here in the city with Kevin Smith from Leonard Springs, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Actually, what we did, it was leadership, all of us, those of you who've been through it, know what it was, it was Mayor's Day, Government Day, actually, they had the mayors come in, the six of us spoke, spoke to everybody, slayed each other. We, we spoke to the class for about an hour and a half this year, they actually changed the format a little bit, and gave more time for questions from the, from the group, so it really, 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 really worked out well. They did separate Triplet, Charles, and myself, they put us at all different ends of the day, so we wouldn't joke around with each other, but I think they made it worse, because we actually could see each other then, so, but anyway, it was a great day, and I think the class enjoyed it. Anything else from anybody?
Yeah, I just got one thing.
Guarda?
Just want to say my unofficial request to the Jacksonville Jaguars, I think after yesterday's game, that it's very obvious that Blake Fortals should be the starting quarterback for the Jags. Let's not get too deep, I saw three knock-down passes from Henny, I think Blake's about four inches taller, so we would have got those in, maybe we would have won the game, so, you know, I think we'd all agree, put our boy in.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, future meeting dates, we have Monday, September 15th, we're having a workshop, 5:30 PM, all, City Council Chamber. Monday, September 22nd, 6:30 PM, regular session. October 6th, 6:30 PM, regular session. October 20th, 6:30 PM, regular session.